Okay, thank you.
Hi Kim, hi Wendy.
All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Welcome, everybody, to the Goffstown School Board Meeting. It is Monday, May 18th, 2020. Before we start our agenda, I do need to read the right to know law and take attendance. As the Chair of the Goffstown School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 202004, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. This meeting is being broadcast on local cable access Goffstown as well as on the Goffstown YouTube channel. If anyone wishes to provide public comment, please call 603-766-5646. Enter participant code 685562. I am also confirming, we previously sufficiently posted this information, and this body has consistently followed through on all the requirements pursuant to holding a meeting in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12. In the event the public is unable to access the Zoom meeting due to a widespread system problem, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. We need to take a roll call attendance. When I say your name, say here and if you're alone. Dan Cludier.
I am here. I am currently alone.
Thank you. Ellen Vermaakowitz.
Here and alone.
Susanna Buzell.
I'm here, I'm alone.
Janelle O'Brien.
Here and alone.
Jared Talbot.
Here and alone.
Ginny McKinnon.
Here and alone.
Retta Chaffee.
Here and alone.
And I'm Heather Trapez, and I'm here and alone. We also have Brian Balki, our Superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. I am here and I am alone.
Thank you. Scott Gross, our Business Administrator.
Yes, I'm here and alone.
Denise Morin, our Administrative Assistant.
Here and alone.
Thank you. Frank McBride, our High School Principal.
Here and alone.
Wendy Kohler, our Mountain View Middle School Principal.
Here alone.
Kim McCann, our High School Assistant Principal.
I'm here and alone.
Justin Huff, our Athletic Director.
Here and alone.
Thank you. And M.C. Berry, our Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, I'm here and I'm alone.
Thank you, everybody. So with that, we can move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Scott, if you have our flag. And once the flag is up, if everybody could stand and say the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag. Of the United States of America.
Republic. For which it stands.
One nation. Under God.
Visible.
Everybody. Justice for all.
Justice.
Thank you, everyone. All right, so we're gonna move to approve. I need a motion to approve the May 4th, 2020 Board Minute Meeting.
So moved.
Who is that? Janelle? Okay, Janelle motion, do I have a second?
Ellen.
Ellen seconds.
I'd like to amend it.
Okay.
If I may.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, I move that these minutes reflect that we need to seal the non-public SSS Technology Maintenance nominations and the MOU discussions.
Of May 4th.
Of May 4th.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Ellen.
For how long?
Unless there's an objection, I'm gonna say add infinitum.
Yeah, an infinitum is fine. So we have that. So at our last meeting, when we went to non-public, we did not seal these minutes, so that's why we're amending the minutes. So since I have a motion and a second, we're gonna put that on hold. I'm gonna need to do a roll call to approve the amendment. So when I call your name, give me your vote. Dan?
I'm abstaining, as I was not in attendance.
Okay, perfect. Ellen?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So Denise, we have those minutes sealed. Now, we're gonna do a roll call to, unless somebody saw something else on the minutes, we'll do a vote to call the motion for that. Does anybody have anything that they saw other than the amendment? I don't see anything. Okay, so Dan?
I'm abstaining, as I was not in attendance.
Okay. Ellen?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Retta? Oh, you're muted, Retta.
Can you hear me now?
I can.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Heather, yes. So we're unanimous on that. Thank you, everybody, for your patience on changing that. So the next...
Almost unanimous.
Yes, almost unanimous, true. Dan, you abstained.
Thank you.
Correspondence. Brian, we got the New Hampshire DOE Year End Planning Guidance?
We did, and I believe Mr. Gross is going to put this up on the screen. So this is some guidance that we were looking forward to from the Department of Education with respect to end-of-year activities such as promotions, graduations, et cetera. And I did wanna show this part that I highlighted. Ultimately, it will be the school district's responsibility to manage and mitigate crowds accordingly and in compliance with all emergency orders. So there really isn't a whole lot that's helpful or useful in here. The majority of districts, in speaking with other superintendents, that are doing any kind of end-of-the-year activities are doing them outdoors, or they are postponing. So there is an element of liability that one might be able to perceive in that one last sentence. And Scott, you can go ahead and stop sharing, I just wanted to share that one sentence in particular. But, so this is something that, as we are working on planning some of our end-of-the-year events, this is information that we were looking forward to. We also were expecting to receive end-of-year guidance for school districts with respect to our extended school year programs. The Commissioner had shared that we should hope to receive that by May 15th, and that date has come and gone. So we are still awaiting that. The Board is aware that we made the local decision that we would be doing our extended school year programs remotely this year. We simply can't wait on guidance. We have to plan, we have to act. So at this point, we will get certainly more into the discussion this evening, a little further in our agenda with respect to end-of-the-year activities, and that's why Frank, Kim, Wendy, and Justin have joined us this evening. Thank you.
Okay, Brian, thank you. So we'll discuss that more later. All right, commendations, good news? Anyone?
Heather, I do have some on behalf of the high school, if I may.
Sure, thanks, Scott.
All right, so let me just show you, this first one is, these are two photographs, I'm just gonna bring them up, and the robotics team, let me just share those. The robotics team came in first place in a competition prior to everything shutting down, but this is a picture of one of the students and their coach. And I believe I have another one where they, this shows the banner that they were one of the winners. So Kevin Farley asked that I share that with the school board as part of our good news.
I think that student was Caleb Hagner, too, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Awesome, thank you. Anybody else with commendations, good news? Ginny, are you waving your hand?
I am waving my hand. I would just, because the Goffstown Library works with us so well, I'd just like to recognize them for their Library of the Year Award that they've gotten recently. So kudos to the Goffstown Town Library.
Awesome, thank you. Anyone else? Casey and None, we're gonna move on to public comment. Scott, do we have anyone?
Heather, we do not have anyone on hold for public comment.
Really? Okay. All right, so closing that, we'll move on to committee reports. So Scott, finance discussion.
Sure, I'm gonna... Yep, I'm gonna share my screen with you. This is a copy of the manifest summary form which you all received. For this particular manifest, it totals $1,555,766.68. It's comprised of three large components, payroll, taxes, and benefits. Total $1,85,465.98. In terms of sped activity, the first one you'll note is for Durham Transportation, that was for April, that also includes some fuel credits. We did negotiate with Durham Transportation, so you'll see, that was a 50% credit for both May and June, so we'll see that much less in the weeks ahead. Core vocational, a little over $10,000, maximum healthcare services around $9,000 for multiple students, instituted professional practice, $5,300 and change, and constellations, about $73,000, again, for April, multiple students. General expenses, as I scroll down, SAU 19, $86,615, that's your May assessment. The town of Goffstown, a little over $40,000, and that is half a year for SRO services at Mountain View. St. Anson College, a little over $18,000, that is Sullivan Arena rentals for athletics, predominantly that is for your ice hockey time for games and practices. EverSource, $13,000 and change for electricity. Home Depot Pro, a little over $11,000, and you'll see another one below that hilliard for $6,700. We did purchase a lot of our supplies for an early start to our summer cleaning, that was kinda cut off on your summary. Stan Tech Consultant, $9,800 and change for the Glen Lake Project. BMO Harris Bank is our credit card for the district, and that was from predominantly software fees as well as PPE purchases. And lastly, Dead River Propane, almost $10,000. Again, we will see that drop off considerably as we're in the warmer months. So with that, again, the total of the manifest is $1,555,776.68.
Great, thank you, Scott. So I need a motion to approve.
Heather?
Yes.
I had my hand up, sorry.
Oh, I can't see it.
Oh, it's, there it is again.
There it is, okay.
If Scott, any of the manifest items down below the line that we have paid for transparency's sake, did we actually receive the services? Or...
Yeah, yeah, so for the special education, you mean?
No, for the SRO, the ice time.
Yes, so in terms of the, yes, on the ice time, all of that was all in arrears, shall we say?
Yeah.
The SRO services, you could make an argument that that did cease in mid to late March.
Right, so it's either gonna come out of the town budget, or it's gonna come out of our school budget. It's, it's, either way, it's part of the tax base. So it just makes it harder if we would shift it back the other way.
Yeah, they technically had it as part of their revenues, and so that's kinda why that was done.
Sure. I just wanted to make that so that it's part of the record.
Sure.
Great, thank you, Dan. Ellen, I saw your hand up.
Did Dan move it? Because I was gonna second it if he moved it.
No, not yet.
I haven't moved it yet. Scott needs to put up the number again.
I will do that.
I would like to move that we approve the total manifest in the amount of $1,555,776.68.
Great, thank you, Ellen. Second. Anybody have any questions for Scott? Casey and None, we'll do a roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Denise, Janelle said yes, but it was very soft. Okay, Scott.
All right, I'm gonna share my desktop again. We're gonna be talking about food service, and I did chat with the Board last week, last meeting, I should say, about our deficit for food service. So for those who might be listening on TV, because our food service, our revenue stopped, the students were not paying for meals, although we were continuing to pay expenses for payroll, benefits, et cetera, we are gonna be projecting to have a substantial deficit. What you'll see here is an estimation that was done with Megan Bizarro and Laura Taylor. Megan is our Food Service Director, Laura is our Assistant Business Administrator, and they are projecting a deficit of $267,971.43. That number is a plus or minus, it could change, could go a little higher, could go a little bit lower. But what I wanted to share with you, that, again, most of the revenues, we capture a lot of revenues towards the tail end of the year, and obviously, when you're not open for three and a half, three, three and a half months, all that revenue disappeared. So that being said, it is my recommendation that we would do a fund transfer of up to $207,000 to cover food service, the deficit in food service. Obviously, anything under $275,000, we would just transfer that amount at the end of the year. Anything above that amount of $275,000 would come out of the fund balance for food service, which is a little over $100,000. Please note that the fund balance for food service is typically used to purchase equipment. We recently had to do a purchase for a, what was it, a steamer unit at Goffstown High School. So the purposes of that is to have a little bit of money in your balance, so that if a piece of equipment goes down, you know, you can use that money to pay for it. So if there are any questions, again, my recommendation would be a $275,000, up to $275,000 fund transfer from the general fund to the food service fund to make that whole due to the fact of, the fact that, you know, the food service was ostensibly closed for three and a half months with no revenues coming in.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Can you put us back? I saw Ellen's hand up. Ellen, did you have a question for Scott? And I see Dan's hand.
I have two questions. This is, these expenditures, so that we're providing the free breakfast and lunch for the children who qualify for it, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be a reimbursable from the federal government.
That's my question. When does that come in?
I'm not quite sure. It could, it could be next month, it could be into the next fiscal year, but, and that may lower that amount, Ellen, so not sure yet.
Okay.
When that comes into play.
And from where are the funds being transferred out of?
More than likely, I'm gonna talk a little bit about fund balance later, but we're seeing, we saw savings in our salary line of our health insurance line, transportation line will be a very substantial one, probably to the tune of about $150,000, but those, that's where the bigger lines are. We've seen savings in supply lines, equipment lines. One of the concerns, and I've shared this with a couple of Board members privately, is that there may be, let's say in the health insurance line, I believe we have over $200,000 of savings in that line or leftover budget, but that comprised is like 30 different budget lines, and I'm not so sure that I will do a, you know, 30 budget line transfer for that purpose. I'm kinda looking at the budget right now at an account level, and again, rattling off between salaries, health insurance, transportation, supplies, and equipment, we have more than enough to cover this deficit.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Ellen, was that it? Before I call on Dan?
I guess I'm a little confused, because we continue to pay salary, we continue to pay transportation, and then the insurance, how come there's so much money left?
Well, if you recall...
You're missing something, I'm sure.
Well, we're, yeah, we're continuing to pay transportation, but now we're gonna be paying it special ed at 50% credit, and we're gonna be getting about a 40% credit on our regular ed transportation. We've incurred no spring sports transportation, because we didn't have a sports season, we didn't have stipends for our spring sports, so there's a lot of, there's areas where we didn't incur expenses, so...
Thank you.
Okay.
Dan, go ahead, I saw your hand.
Thank you, Heather.
You're welcome.
Scott, even, I am looking for the authority in a statute that would allow us to transfer from, albeit, the general fund to an enterprise fund. I agree with the concept because of the COVID-19. I'm just looking for the auditability of that type of transfer.
Yeah, I spoke with our auditor about this specifically, Cheryl Pratt, and this is what almost every school district is doing, authorizing, and she said, she made it very clear to me that I needed a motion and a vote from the Board that would authorize the fund transfer. I can't do that on my own. So it has to come from the Board to transfer funds from, transfer it from the food, I'm sorry, from the general fund to the food service fund.
Thank you. When you're ready, when you're ready for a motion, Heather, let me know.
I'm ready, unless someone else has any other questions for Scott regarding... Go ahead, Jared, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Just a general question. Scott, you said that we have a fund balance of roughly $100,000 within the food services account?
We do, yes.
And my question is, I know that they use this for replacement of hardware or capital items. Do we have anything coming up that we know of in the next year or two that would equate to over $50,000 and pulling from that fund?
So I should also clarify, Jared, that not only is it capital expenses, but it's been used to, I guess, mitigate rate increases as well. So we might, if we don't raise our, whether it be our lunch prices, breakfast prices, or our milk prices adequately, it would cover any type of shortfall as well. In terms of replacement, I know that Megan had talked to me about replacement of steam tables, and I think Mountain View might have been one of them, but it's, other than that, I don't know of other large type of capital expenses, but I can tell you that that steam, steam unit was, I think was $15,000 for that alone. We have in, not that it's Goffstown, but in New Boston, we had to spend, I think it was $3,000 or $4,000 on a dishwasher, so these, food service equipment is really pricey, and I know that might sound a little crazy, but $100,000 is not a ton to have in that type of fund balance at all.
And if you could just refresh the public, I do believe that we actually did raise prices this past year on some of those items, correct? So that we could maintain that balance?
You did, you did, and we also, if you recall, we also implemented yet another vending machine at Goffstown High School that was favorable to us. But one of the challenges that we have in food service is our staffing consideration. So when you look at that, on that sheet that I had shown, you know, before, when you look at the payroll and the benefits that we have regarding food service, if we, our GESS contract, that increased our need to, in terms of raising revenue, by about $20,000 in our food service budget. So the only way to make that up is you have to have increased sales or increased prices, and that is a bit challenging, so, and I think the fund balance helps to hold the line on food prices, because there is a certain threshold where you go too, too high on a price, then all of a sudden, you know, kids don't buy the, don't buy the meals, because they're too pricey. So the $100,000 gives you a little bit of cushion, shall I say, if your revenues are short because of your, you know, you might need to raise your pricing, it helps in that regard. So it's a combination, mostly capital that we keep it for, but it also is a buffer for revenue shortfalls in the case of, you know, pricing issues.
Brian, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Heather. I also just wanted to share with the Board that in the relatively recent past, our food service fund balance was almost $300,000. So we've had a pretty significant erosion over the last several years of that fund balance. So historically, we had been, we had around $275,000 in that fund, and that has been slowly deteriorating over the last couple of years.
Yes, thank you, Brian. Okay, so if there are no other questions, I need a motion to transfer money?
I have one for you, Heather.
Perfect, Dan, go ahead.
Due to the COVID-19 pandemic emergency declared, the Board would authorize up to $275,000 of general fund monies transferred to the food services account to eradicate any deficit that would be incurred for the fiscal 2020 school year.
Perfect. Thank you. Second by Ellen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We can do a roll call if there's no other questions. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Retta? Where'd you go, Retta?
My spacebar didn't work, yes.
Thank you. And Heather, yes, we're unanimous, Denise, thank you. All right, Scott, you have more?
Sure, so the next one also has to deal, deals with money. I'm gonna share my screen with you for a second again, and you'll all, that last July, they did receive grants for, for safety grants for a central axle project, and we received an award of about $160,000 for that project. We also received a grant for a visitor management system, again, that was for $24,000, and then there was a couple of others for door locks, et cetera. In total, we received almost $200,000 from the state for those projects, however, they need $50,000 on the district. So over the course of the last year, Steve Borchet and Randy, so Steve is our IT Director, Randy is our Facilities Director, they've assembled a team to discuss the access controls in our buildings as well as the management system. We were able, I believe that the locks were done already as well as the, have been procured. Nonetheless, we need a $10,000 grant match so that we can finish these projects over the summer or into the fall. We do have a December 31st, 2020 deadline in which to do that. So once again, we probably would have liked to have done this project, you know, or at least encumbered the monies back months ago, but we're kind of late in the game on this due to what we've been dealing with, but we do need to reserve monies to cover the match for these, for all these grants and products that we're doing. And so we'd need $50,000 in order to do that, it's needed the Board's approval to encumber those funds.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Can I see the full screen again? No, thank you. Oh, Jared's got his hand up. Go ahead, Jared.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Mr. Gross, was this part, these projects part of the fiscal budget for this year?
No.
Are they in any budget that's been passed?
No, because it was a grant that we secured, and it was awarded to us in July, so this becomes part of our, more or less, our grants budget, keeping in mind that our grants budget, typically, we don't necessarily raise tax dollars for that, it's usually, it's a neutral, so grants can, we only spend what we get in terms of the grants that we receive. This one's a bit unusual, because it was a 20% match. So if we have grants from the federal government, IDEA title grants, we only spend what we receive. So if we have grants from the federal government, IDEA title grants, uh, we only spend what we receive. This one's a little unusual. It's a state grant, um, and there is a twenty percent component. So the, the only way that we can, you know, more or less obtain, uh, the two hundred thousand from the state is to put up the fifty thousand dollars, um, of matching funds. This was though, um, part of a previous C I P in terms of our, um, access control visitor management. It was in there.
Thank you, Scott. Dan, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Heather. Scott?
Yeah.
What, what is the fiscal, let me phrase it this way. What is the effective date of the grant?
The effective date of the grant was, uh, July fifth of nine, two thousand nineteen.
And when did we get the letter?
That's when we got it. So hold on, I'll, I'll show it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so the grant was July one. I'll show my, share my screen with you.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, the, if the letter was dated July one, I think we received it on, let me just bring up, yeah, July fifth is when we got it. Uh, and then the expiration date must be claimed by December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. So the thought is that, um, we could encumber funds for this project using our current budget. Uh, if we don't do that and we still want to do the project, then I would have to use funds from the next year's budget in order to cover that match. So that's kind of the, the thought process. And with, like I had mentioned before, due to savings and so those other areas, I would recommend that we would encumber those funds out of this year's budget to proceed with this project.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Oh, perfect. All right, are there any other questions for Scott? Oh, go ahead, Jared.
Yeah, just, uh, I want to make sure I heard this correctly. Scott, you said that this was actually on C I P at one point?
Yeah.
So my, my follow-up question is, why would this not come from the capital reserve fund versus the general fund?
Because this, we don't have this in place right now. We don't have a visitor management program, uh, uh, nor do we have, um, the, we don't, it's not an existing asset. We're adding this control system into our buildings?
But it was in part of the planning tool for capital.
Yeah, again, I, I, it's one of the confusing parts of, of capital, of, of C I P and our, and our capital reserve. And I'll, I'll, I'll go through it if I may one more time. So our capital improvements plan, um, it includes items that are above twenty-five thousand dollars. It can include, um, I T related items. It can, it can include vehicles. It can include, include roofs, you name it. Our capital reserve fund though is, is very, very specific in what we can spend those monies on. And it only allows us to spend monies on the replacement of existing capital assets. So, uh, if we were to buy a slew of computers, we could not use, even though that might be in the C I P document, um, we could not use the capital reserve fund because the capital reserve fund purpose when it was created was to replace existing capital assets. And we don't, we didn't have this capital asset. We don't have it. So it's not replacing the existing one because it's a new endeavor.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay.
Right. Ellen, I saw your hand up.
Thank you, Scott covered it. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. So let's, uh, move this along. We'll need a motion to approve a transfer of fifty thousand dollars for Scott. Somebody make a motion. Ellen, go ahead.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Janelle.
And Janelle is seconding. All right, so I'll need a roll call.
And just for giggles.
Yes, Dan.
I always like it, especially when we're in this atmosphere to actually state the motion that's going to be in the record.
Okay. Sounds good.
If Denise has it.
Denise, do you have Ellen's motion?
Yeah, Ellen Markowitz' motion to transfer the fifty thousand dollars seconded by Janelle O'Brien.
If I, if I may, I think that the motion might need to be worded a bit differently. It would just simply be to authorize the business administrator to encumber fifty thousand dollars.
Or up to fifty thousand dollars.
Up to fifty thousand dollars to cover, uh, the matching portion, right? Of, of the, of the grant that was received.
I said that so well.
Scott, do you need to come out of a certain account?
No, it doesn't. I just, it's, it's just, I, the motion just needs that it's allowing me to encumber the fund.
Okay, perfect. So Ellen, you're good with that? Dan, you're, oh no, Janelle seconded it. Janelle, you're good with that?
Yes, I'm good with that.
All right, let's do a roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Denise, we're unanimous. All right, Scott, one more thing.
Yeah, on this one, we, on our, on our committee report for co-curricular stipends, we're still not at a point where we can make a recommendation. Although we have spoken with many of the administrators that are on the call tonight, uh, Kate is still, uh, doing a, um, I guess, a con, a confirmation to make sure that the stipended amounts that we have for some of these positions are, are commensurate with our formula. And, um, so you should see this before you at the next meeting.
All right, great. Thank you, Scott. All right, moving on to superintendent report. Brian, that's you.
Good evening, everyone. So just a few things for the board's consideration this evening. We will be looking for a board member to present retirement bells. Um, so this will be a little unusual in that we typically would ask someone to attend a staff meeting where a board member would, uh, present the retirement bells. But we will be doing that, uh, a little differently this year. So we're going to be doing some virtual presentations of those bells. So if, um, anyone might be interested or available, um, in the past, I think Retta has done a fair amount of this as, uh, the chair of planning and communication. So this might be something if her schedule would allow, um, we could maybe touch base with Mrs. Morin. We would have to get the dates. So I, I apologize. I don't have the dates to give to you this evening from all the schools. But that would be something that I would, um, be looking for a volunteer to connect with Mrs. Morin. I wanted to let everyone know that we have been, um, on a voluntary basis, allowing teachers to be cleaning out their classrooms. So we developed a process and have had, I think, very good safety controls associated with that. So that's been ongoing. Students will also be picking up any materials that they may have left. So that could be athletic lockers at the high school. It could be lockers at the high school, contents of desks or cubbies. So the teachers, uh, essentially bagged up all the students' information and all their, um, sweatshirts, lunchboxes, any of that kind of stuff, water bottles, and we're getting that, um, those things back to our families. Mrs. Barry has been working very hard, uh, with all of our summer program folks to develop our Connected Learning Camp for the summer. So this will include not only our extended school year program for special education students who qualify. This also includes our Title One Summer Program. And something a little unique that we're doing this year is we're offering up, um, enrichment activities on a five-week camp-type basis. So that families may choose to stay engaged with learning. They may be interested in some enrichment activities. Um, M C's working on everything from art, music, um, museum trips. She's got all kinds of stuff that's being planned. And Christina Lamson, who is our library media specialist at Maple Lab, is working very closely with Mrs. Barry to make that happen. So I'm very, uh, appreciative of that. And I think, I think families are going to be pretty interested. So when we finish school on June eleventh, there's going to be a, a good chunk of time that I think families are going to be missing the consistent structural, um, habits associated with connected learning. So I think this will be something that people will be interested in. I wanted to let everyone know that there is a school transition reopening and redesign task force that has started their work. Last Thursday was the first meeting. Um, I attended that meeting and listened in on the conversation. Uh, Barrett Christina is part of that group. Barrett is the executive director of the New Hampshire School Boards Association. Um, of note, there is not one single New Hampshire superintendent on the entire group. So out of, uh, I think more than fifty members who are participating on six different task forces, um, there are no New Hampshire superintendents. That likely doesn't matter all that much for us. Um, we, I think, are, are pretty ahead of this from a planning perspective. But I did want to let the board know that that was happening. Um, Mrs. Kohler is here. I think I might have mentioned, but if I didn't, I want to make sure I do, that Wendy did a, uh, virtual talent show that she posted online that was really pretty awesome. Um, so if you haven't, if you're ever looking for an hour, um, of something to do that doesn't involve Netflix, it's a pretty neat thing. And it was really cool to see all, all of what our faculty and, uh, students were able to do. Transition is something that, uh, we have worked closely with and continues to be an area of great importance, um, for us. I'm going to share my screen and just show, um, a document real quick that, um, this document outlines the many transition elements that Mrs. Kohler is doing at Mountain View. So everything from sort of virtual panels to Zoom panels to new videos, um, they're all working very, very hard, um, to make sure that we're still putting the thoughtful planning into our transition because it's critically important for kids as they matriculate between buildings. So for students entering Mountain View from Bartlett and Maple as well as New Boston students. Yeah, I continue to meet weekly with, um, our town chiefs. So our police and fire chief as well as Derek Horn, um, our town administrator and our town manager from New Boston as well. I wanted to speak briefly about the school calendar. Um, everyone may know that this was a bit of a delayed, um, process for us because we were waiting for confirmation from the Manchester School District this year. So just to give everyone a little bit of sense of, um, timeline, we start the school development process of our calendar in October. And that, um, culminates in typically our calendar is posted for the Department of Education by the beginning of April. Um, this year, Manchester was late in confirming their school vacation weeks, but they have now done so. So we have published the calendar. Um, we might have some inquiries that we're starting perhaps a little bit earlier. We're starting at the, the very last couple of days of August, and I did just want to briefly speak to that. Labor Day is very late this year, so it's, uh, actually September seventh. So waiting until after Labor Day was a, a really late start for us. Excuse me. And also of note, we have three elections during the next school year. So we have a primary on the, actually the day after Labor Day, September eighth. And then we have the, um, November general election as well as our local election in March. So those three election days, uh, is significantly more than normal. Typically, we just have the March vote. And sometimes we have, obviously, the congressional, um, and gubernatorial elections. But so that's a, a piece that I wanted to share with people. Um, the Meals for Kids program that, uh, Megan Bizarro and our team at the, uh, at the schools, working on our, with our food service folks, that program has been extended until, uh, September thirtieth. So we do plan on continuing to be able to offer meals over the summer. We have not formally planned out what that's going to look like, but the, uh, federal program has been extended. So that's really important for our families that have food insecurity. Um, ESER is the Elementary and Secondary Education Recovery Act. Goffstown will be receiving additional, um, stimulus funds. We are anticipating two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. We've started to have some preliminary conversations. And at this point, we are likely, um, going to be bringing a recommendation to the board to focus on technology. So if in fact, we continue to find ourselves in a remote learning environment in the fall, we have a number of families that are still struggling with sharing devices. So we would be looking to expand that. Mr. Borget also has had, um, some additional areas of focus that he'd like to, um, focus on.
Hey, Brian, I just wanted, if I may, um, that food service issue, I think Megan texted me. She said that we're still waiting on the federal waiver to go beyond the summer. So we're good through June thirtieth. We think we're gonna get it.
The commissioner last week, so I'm, I'm pretty confident.
Yeah, we're pretty confident. We are too, but it just hasn't officially come down, so.
Okay. Well, the commissioner announced it to superintendents that it was a done deal. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to assume that that's the case. I wanted to let you know I approved two early graduation, um, requests, one for Jenna Tashida and one for Caleb Kilbreth. So we wish them well, um, as they will be graduating early. And, um, that's all I have, Heather. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Brian. All right, so the next thing is to remind, yes, I'm sorry, Ellen.
Sorry, it's Ellen. Um, I think at our last meeting, this topic came up under the superintendent's report. So I thought I'd ask about the status of Glen Lake and was it someplace else on this agenda that I don't see?
Uh, it's not on the agenda tonight. Um, Scott is still getting information and we should have something for the next meeting. Uh, is there anything else, Scott, you want to add to that?
Uh, not really. I mean, in the sense that right now they're in the process of, of excavating for the footings and, you know, for concrete work. Um, so in, in that respect, it, it's kind of moving ahead as, you know, on schedule. I'm, I'm waiting on an update from Randy with regard to the, the construction progress of the modular classroom itself. But other than that, everything else has been moving, you know, rather quickly, almost ahead of schedule, knock on wood, um, with regard to the excavation work.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Scott. All right, so moving on, we have a S A U Joint Area Board meeting on Thursday, June fourth at six. And following that will be the S A U Board meeting. So we're going to have two meetings on the same night at six o'clock, uh, via Zoom conference. Scott will send out, um, the invitation to that. Now we go into old business. We're going to discuss the foreign exchange student. We talked about this at the last board meeting. We wanted to give host families an opportunity to come to the board, ask questions, um, before we made a final decision. You should have also received the policy via emails from Denise Morin. Brian, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, thank you, Heather. So I, I appreciate that, um, the board allowed for some time. It was good to give families the opportunity to connect with me. I know that I heard from several families that were planning on hosting foreign exchange students. It also allowed the New Boston Board the opportunity to be informed, um, about this topic as they had one student who potentially was a New Boston tuition student. I, I was expecting, um, some public comment this evening. I, I did, I thought we were going to be hearing from at least one, um, interested family. I did receive some email, um, correspondence from a couple of our different families. And, um, ultimately, uh, so I'll just share one here that's kind of a long email, but it said, "I agree with you in the board. We have a hard enough time focusing on remote learning." Um, and the idea of having remote learning with a foreign exchange student was concerning. So I think that at this point, um, my recommendation would be to suspend all foreign exchange students, um, opportunities by suspending policy J F A B B. I did put this out also at the state level and the majority of school districts hadn't thought about this yet. But there were a few that had. I know that Bo has suspended foreign exchange students and a few other districts were doing the same thing. Um, it's just the, if in fact, we continue to be in a remote learning environment, the entire experience truly is compromised for these kids. They want to come to the United States because they want to be able to be part of the culture. They want to play sports. They want to be on site. The idea of having someone who's never potentially even stepped foot onto the campus of Goffstown High School, who has never met any kids and then is potentially doing, uh, remote learning from either in Goffstown or New Boston or potentially from their own host, um, community. So I think it's unlikely that anyone from, um, the majority of these students would be coming from Europe. I think it's incredibly unlikely that any of their families would send them. But I would just share again, I mentioned this at the last meeting. We do have some concerns. In particular, we have one student who was going to be coming from Spain. Spain has very strict requirements of what they, uh, what courses they require and how they're, how they're done. And I just, I think at this point, it's, um, not something that we're going to be able to handle. I know it's disappointing for these families that have been planning and, um, you know, have done all the work to host a family. But I think at this point, it's just simply, um, too much for us to be able to manage just because there are so many unknowns. So, um, at this point, I recognize that this might be a disappointment for families. Um, but my recommendation would be to suspend policy J F A B B, um, for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year.
Great, thank you, Brian. Ellen, I saw your hand and then Dan.
Um, I moved that we suspend the foreign exchange student program for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. Policy J F A B B.
Okay, thank you, Ellen. Dan, did you have a question or did you want to?
No, that was a thumbs up, so I'll second the motion.
All right, thank you. So Denise, did you get that Ellen motion? Dan second? Any other discussion on this? Any other discussion on this before I call a vote? Okay, I'm gonna do a roll call, Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Rheta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're unanimous. Thank you Brian.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to new business, high school graduation and Mountain View promotion exercise.
So I'm gonna provide just a few opening remarks and then I will ask Mrs. Kohler, Mrs. McCann, Mr. McBride, Mr. Huff. To speak a little bit about some of the planning that we've been having. So in general, we know that these end of year ceremonies are rites of passage. We know that these are sort of the culminating event. It's an important bookend for families. So we do recognize that this is kind of a difficult topic. So it's really disappointing to families to think that we're not going to be able to be together in person. With our families to celebrate our students graduating or our students being promoted. But we believe that imperfect closure is better than no closure at all. So we have a number of things that we've been working on. For high school graduation, the board is aware, we had a student survey that we had about 700 people sign. That the kids wanted a ceremony in person. I said at that time and I continue to say now, we agree. We very much would like to be together if conditions from a public health perspective would allow us to do so. At this point, we had been holding out that we might be able to do something at St. A's a little later on, perhaps in the summer. St. A's has informed us that at this point, they're not allowing any on-campus usage of their facilities in the month of June. So we had been looking at the possibility to, to allow us to get back together at a later point in time. But so at this point, I'd like to kind of just let the board know the direction that we're going in. And to see if the board has any direction that they would like administration to continue to pursue. Mrs. Kohler has worked on creating a plan to do a kind of a middle school promotion parade. That she has been working on. We have presented our plans to our local first responders. So police and the police and fire chiefs, Chief Serino and Chief Allard are aware of our plans. We've also involved Derek Horn, our town administrator as part of the planning as well. So I will hand it over to Wendy and ask her to give a little bit of an overview of what she has in the queue. And I think for the high school, this is a little more complicated. So I'll have Wendy speak to this and then I'll give a little more information and then I'll hand it off to my colleagues at Goffstown High School. Mrs. Kohler?
Thank you Brian. What we've come up with at Mountain View is we are going to do a virtual promotion ceremony. That's going to be very similar to what we would run at St. A's. So there'll be various speakers, we'll be making a video and our plan is to get out on June 10th. Which was our original promotion day. Also on the 10th, our plan is for all parents and their families to receive their promotional skate. Along with our graduation or promotion for sure that we leave on that evening. We'd like to do, I think if you have the visual goes with this. We'd like to hold a promotional parade that evening at Mountain View. Scott, do you happen to have the visual? So what we would do is we would have all of our teachers arrive at Mountain View between 4:45 and 5:15. To line the driveway from the baseball field all the way around to the playground. Cars would then come during their designated time. So each team would have a time of 30 minutes to be able to come up Lauren Lane. Where we'd have police details to help with traffic flow. And go with the same route that our buses flow when they come into Mountain View to either drop off or pick up our students. So they would head up near the baseball field, head out back towards our playground area. And they would end up coming out at the softball field. Each team, as I mentioned, would get a half an hour to have all of their kids come through. And we built in a half an hour buffer in between each team to be sure that we don't have any traffic backups in the area. We'd have cones set up around the entire driveway with signs just reminding everybody to stay in their car. To stop on the route. We'd ask all of our parents to have cars and about seven to 10 miles an hour to keep our traffic flow. And all of our teachers would be at their cars lined up socially distanced with masks on. With signs and bells to congratulate our kids as they move around the property. Towards the end of the playground area, the administrative team at Mountain View would have a PA system set up. Where we could announce the kids' names as they come through with their families. So we would ask all of our students to actually sit on the driver's side of their vehicle in the backseat. But a sign would be placed on the front passenger window so that we wouldn't need to go near the cars. And we can see the names of all of our students as they come up towards the playground area to announce them as they come through. Our hope is that Superintendent Bulkey and Mr. McBride would be standing near the softball field. With an enormous banner congratulating our students as they enter their high school years. So again, trying to keep safety in mind, making sure that our students all do get the recognition of a virtual ceremony. Getting their certificates in the mail, but again, being able to celebrate them would be important. We would make a video prior to Promotion Day, just reminding families that they should only have their child, their eighth grade child in the car. We would ask that families are not bringing other people's kiddos in the car with them. Again, to adhere to some of those social distancing requirements from the governor. And we would also ask that just the immediate family be in the car and not have grandparents or extended family members try to follow along the route. Again, trying to be cognizant of traffic concerns and making sure to get everybody through safely in a fun celebratory manner. So that's the plan that we've come up with for Mountain View. We're pretty excited about it. As part of our virtual ceremony as well, our plan is to kind of marry our honors dinner and our promotional activities into one. But we would be sending separate envelopes out to our students who we normally honor at honors dinner. To celebrate either the all As or As and Bs during their seventh and eighth grade year.
Wow Wendy, thank you, oh sorry, go ahead Brian.
Yeah, thank you Heather. I think Wendy did a great job planning this. It's been very thoughtfully and methodically laid out. I would share that the current state of things is that we are under a stay-at-home order. So it's unclear whether that will be extended into June or not. That's something that we would need to pay attention to. But as we read the stay-at-home order, no one would be getting out of cars. So we actually do think that we would arguably be still compliant with that. But that is something that we did want the board to know, we had also considered. So the, I think at this point, we would.
When, only because I have two board members that raised their hand if you were. And Dan, you had your hand up?
Thank you Heather.
You're welcome, sorry Brian.
Wendy, do we, for those family members who can't actually attend and ride with the convoy. Are we gonna be able to livestream what's happening by the playground when their names are announced and stuff? Is that something that's been contemplated?
Um, Dan, I'll be honest with you, we haven't discussed that. You know, I, I believe that most families will participate. But I also think that we will have some families that will choose not to come to the promotional ceremony. But it's something that we can certainly talk with Mr. Bulkey about and see if that's even a possibility.
If I can jump in Wendy, we talked about this at our last school board meeting. We in Goffstown don't have what's called a remote cellular device in which we could go live from a remote location. It's something that I know might be on, you know, a shortlist for either GTV or the school district to purchase. But we believe that Bedford TV, we know they have two of such devices. So if that's something that we're looking at doing, we could certainly reach out to Bedford to see if we could borrow theirs in the interim.
Go ahead Dan.
Sure, as a follow-up, with the, the invention of the, the new thing called the internet. Maybe there's some equipment in what you're talking about that's in Mountain View because we know we've got a fiber connection. But as a secondary capabilities, because if I had a kid who was doing that, one of my grandchildren or something. I'd probably want to view it and see it happen. Would we actually have the ability to tape it so it could play on GTV at a, at a later time?
Brian, you wanna answer that?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that at this point, the middle school has been planning their virtual celebration. That they've been taking the lead on that. Adam has been very busy working on high school events. So we have not had the chance to speak to Adam about this. We certainly will investigate further. Mr. Gross is right about that piece of equipment that Bedford apparently has two of. So we would be more than happy to take a loaner from them. And we would do absolutely everything we could to livestream it or as a plan B to record it for the ability to show at a later point in time.
Okay.
So if there are no other questions for the middles. So I think we're maybe just glitching a little bit there.
Okay.
If, if there are no other questions about Mrs. Kohler's plan, I'm gonna transition into the high school, but I'll just pause for a moment.
Okay, now let's see, oh Ellen, Ellen are you back?
I'm here, just put a thumbs up because I think that's an awesome idea.
Oh, okay.
Thumbs up.
Um, Wendy, just a quick question with the eighth graders. Are you gonna, I'm not sure you're gonna be able to do this, but the hand painting that the eighth graders usually do.
She's got a plan for that.
I actually do. So I have been talking with our art teachers at school and we've come up with a plan to ask our eighth graders. To take a piece of oak tag and we will provide them with the oak tag that they would need if they don't have it. Trace their hand and cut it out on non-white paper. They would write their name on the palm of their hand. And we're gonna ask all of the kids to send them into Mountain View or to drop them off in a specialized location. We then are gonna purchase this special board and we are going to make a design that will either say MBMS or with a heart with all of the hands together. We're gonna create a board and mount it at school and we're gonna have it shellacked. So to be honest with you, this is going to be something that could stay with us forever, that's very special for this class. Because ordinarily, once the students leave high school, we need the wall space, so we paint over those walls. So I think under the circumstances of what this class has gone through. It would be very special to have a special plan just for these students. So I haven't run it out to the, to the students and families yet, but that is what we've been working on behind the scenes.
Oh, that's fantastic, because I've had some parents asking, so I know that's an important ritual that the eighth graders do, so thank you Wendy.
Great, thank you Heather.
We can go on to the high school.
Okay, so just to provide a little bit of an overview of what the high school is working on. Is we typically have a number of significant, important events at the end of the school year. So we have our athletic banquet where we have, where we recognize our senior athletes. We have our scholarship night, academic awards night. We have baccalaureate, which actually isn't our event, but we, we certainly help plan with local clergy. And then of course, graduation. So Mr. McBride and his infinite wisdom has put a bunch of really smart, thoughtful people in charge of developing virtual ceremonial type things. That we're going to hold on the evening that those events would have occurred. So Frank, I don't know if you want to cue this up and then have Justin and Kim jump in. But why don't you give a little bit of an overview of the work that Justin and his team have been doing? And then we'll talk about graduation at the end.
Thank you, and I'll, I'll start with, as I often do. Thank you, huge thank you to Kim and Justin, you know, two of my finest administrators. And everyone has always known how good Kim is, but how good has she been during the pandemic helping to lead? And or just maybe just leading, I'll get, I'll get rid of the helping to lead. So, so, so thank you. And I would want to say, as Mr. Bulkey mentioned, clearly, we know loud and clear that kids and families would prefer to be together having a ceremony. And that is something that we understand, we know and we are in, on the same page with that. So that, as Brian mentioned, that's part of, as we continue to, to use time a bit to continue to see what our options are. Because clearly, loud and clear, we know that is everyone's first choice, no questions asked. With that being said, we know for a fact that we have some huge events. The first one happening next Friday, that we knew, we just were not gonna have enough time to pull it together, stay-at-home order. So academic awards, I'll use that as the example and I'll kick it off to Justin in a minute. Is that we have been doing, and I'm using we loosely, there have been, there's a large group of super, super smart people. That have been working tirelessly to create great virtual content. And then speaking of great, it's always nice to have Adam Acune to polish everything up. So I believe we are handing really good content to Adam and Adam's doing his Adam thing to make it even special. So I think Justin has an example or two that I think Scott's going to put up of some of the work that we've been doing. And I don't know, at any point, Kim, feel free, please to jump in and share some thoughts. And more than anything as well too, we are looking for input. We're looking to see what the board hopes and wants to have happen four-ish weeks from, 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 from today. Particularly when I say that, I'm talking graduation.
Scott?
So this is the first video, it's a little bit awkward for, just let me just share my screen first. It does, I could not get it queued up, so. You'll see the agenda first and then the video will appear.
What, what?
Thanks. Do you want the second one now?
Yeah, please. Not really.
Hopefully it's better.
So we're obviously not gonna divulge who's winning awards.
Or we are.
So that, that's a sneak peek at what, so this Friday will be, that's the academic awards night. So the next three Fridays in a row are the big events at the end of the school year. So instead of in person, obviously it's a virtual event. So you're gonna see stuff like that, you're gonna see video clips of presenters, it could be, it's teachers, it's other students. It's even community members giving out scholarships, that type of stuff. So you're gonna combine it with slideshow type of stuff, you know, tiles and then, you know, videos mixed in there. And Adam's already started his thing where he's got, I don't even know half of what he does. But, you know, putting these together, smooth transitions, all that type of stuff. So hopefully crisp, you know, 30 minutes to an hour for each Friday. And just giving the acknowledgement to the, the students that worked hard to earn those recognitions they would normally get. So we're gonna do that in a virtual setting this year, obviously, because that's where we're at. But we think it'll be something that, that people will enjoy, it'll be broadcast on GTV. We've put some kind of social media, basic, you know, PR blasting out there. And we've also sent targeted invitations to students who will be recognized individually on those nights so that they're aware. That is something that also happens on the, on the real life events, so we're trying to keep that going as well.
Thank you Justin, Mrs. McCann, anything to add?
One of the things that we're also excited about is, as this has kind of pushed us to rethink a little bit some of these events. And what we're, what we're recognizing is next Friday night, the 29th historically has been the Senior Athletic Awards. And we've expanded that out further and so it is going to be a night that recognizes. And so it is going to be a night that recognizes athletic and non-athletic co-curricular awards. We have a team that has worked to develop, um, taking a lot of actually the fundamentals of your cornerstone in Dreamkeeper Awards. The Grizzly Mission Awards and looking to recognize senior students who have gone above and beyond in their contribution to the mission of Goffstown High School. So really excited about some of the, the opportunities that this challenge has presented us with as well.
Thank you, Kim. So then, um, that would bring us to talk about high school graduation. So at this point, um, the majority of school districts that are holding some kind of a graduation type event are doing so outdoors. Um, we do have some limitations given the size of our graduating class. Some schools that have very small, um, schools or have small graduating classes. This is considerably easier, um, to pull off. So we have, what do we have, Kim? About 280 graduating seniors, 288? So you're talking the better, the better part of 300 students. At this point, we still really are holding out for the possibility of having something in person. But I think we're getting probably closer to the point of, you know, should we try to plan something either outdoors? At St. Anselm College, which may be a possibility in the month of July. They will not allow us to do that in the month of June. So, um, at this point, I also would like to see how some of these events go in other school districts. I think that there are risks associated with holding some of these events. I think that people's ability to continue to make good choices with respect to social distancing is something that concerns me. Um, I had a superintendent share with me that they did an event that was similar to our academic awards night. And it was, um, all of the highest achieving students from a New Hampshire, um, public high school. They did it at an outdoor, um, location and they had significant issues that kids were grouping. They were hugging, they were high-fiving, they were together, they were doing all the very things that we would want them not to do. So I do have some concerns about that. I also have concerns with respect to that end of year guidance, that there is the potential that if something goes wrongly, that school districts potentially have liability. There also have been, um, discussions whether superintendents would be potentially, um, jeopardizing their own certification by doing things that may allow for the governor's executive orders to not be followed. So at this point, I, I think we, we don't have a firm plan on high school graduation. We have been in the camp of let's give it some time, let's look to have this event later in the summer. And I think we still find ourselves there, but we did want to, um, have the board, um, be able to ask questions of high school administration or to share any thoughts, um, that board members have with respect to high school graduation.
Thank you, Brian. Does anybody have any questions? Oh, Jared, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Mr. Balki, I know that you said specifically about St. Anne's College, but are there other venues such as Gil Stadium in Manchester that might be a possibility?
I think that's a, a, a good que- a good question, Jared. The other one that, um, I know that some school districts are looking at is the, uh, the Snue Arena in Manchester. So the, I, I don't know what the firm capacity of, of that stadium is, probably more than 15,000, I would think. But they were going to, so I know that this is the Londonderry plan. I think that this is, um, a plan for some of the other larger schools that they have booked the arena. And they were going to essentially seat people 10 feet apart within the arena. So they were going to skip rows. They were going to skip, um, sections. My issue and some school districts are doing things like I heard Milford is using the, uh, drive-in movie theater. I still struggle with anything that potentially involves a bathroom. So I don't know how these school districts are going to, um, clean bathrooms, sanitize bathrooms. If they're going to have some kind of a process that every so many individuals who use a bathroom. So some of those logistical pieces, um, remain a concern to me. But to, to Jared's question, we're definitely open to looking at other locations. I think the high school's preference would be to continue to use St. Anselms because it's special. It's, um, the one time that we, we use that facility. And so, um, in addition to the middle school promotion, so that, that, um, location, I think has a certain reverence to it. So we are definitely open to other locations. Um, but at this point, we've, we've really focused on either the Snue Arena, we focused on St. Anselm College. But certainly some of the other, um, you know, we jokingly talked about Fisher Cat, where the Fisher Cats play, um, the little ballpark. So I think that we're open to a lot of different locations.
Thank you, Jared and Brian. So, um, when is the high school graduation? Is that supposed to be June 11th?
It's supposed to be June 11th and at this point, they are planning on doing the virtual event that evening. So, um, if we were to do something supplemental in person, we would do so at a later point. One of the things I would just share with the board, I've had a couple of families reach out to me that we have a number of students who are joining the military. And for these students, they are being deployed, um, in the middle of June. So if we did a ceremony in July or August, they would not have the ability to participate. So we have had a number of, um, families of kids who have enlisted, ask us to please hold something on that same day. And that's, that's what we plan to do. We would like to do something in person after the fact. Logistically, doing something with 288, uh, graduating seniors like Wendy is doing, we think is too much to probably safely pull off. Uh, we would also be concerned about the impact on traffic and, and the like, but a- at this point, that's where we find ourselves.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. So, um, so we're definitely doing a virtual graduation, June 11th. So when do we need to make a decision to do something in person for July? I mean, I would think by, at least by the next board meeting, correct? So that parents, families can plan.
I, I think yes. Um, the thing that will continue to be a challenge here though, is we just don't know what the public health circumstances will be. So, you know, we know how quickly things change. Um, we don't know what Governor Sununu's directives may be from an executive, um, order perspective. But we will put this on the next agenda and we will plan to hopefully have an update as the committee, um, continues to do their work.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Does anybody have anything else to say before we move along? No? Kim, did you have something to say?
Nope, awesome. Thank you.
I saw your square light up. All right. Well, thank.
With that, I may, uh, ask Mr. McBride, Mrs. McCann, Mr. Huff and, uh, Mrs. Kohler. If, uh, if they, uh, have no other plans, they're welcome to stay, but I would certainly wish them a pleasant evening and, uh, tell them to, uh, sign off.
Sounds good to me. Thank you, everyone for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Have a good night, guys. Thanks for being here.
Good night. Okay. So moving on from the high school graduation, we're to discuss the board retreat. So typically we have it in June as our last board meeting. Uh, we brought it up last meeting a couple of weeks ago. Retta, did you, um, want to speak to that?
Yeah, um, we, I mean, we have this every year. Personally, where we are right now, I'm not sure that it really makes sense to even consider doing this at this point in time. I think there's still a lot more work that has to be done through the end of June. It tend, it tends to be the next to the last meeting, um, you know, when we were wrapping things up. But it, it feels like we're, we're not close to wrapping things up at this point. I, I still feel strongly that probably now more than ever, there's, there's real importance to having the retreat, but it may be better timed towards the beginning of the fall term because we'll know a lot more about what, what lays ahead of us.
You're right. Right. I agree. And it's also the ambiance of us all being together in a room to be able to discuss goals, how our year has been, uh, that kind of thing. So does anybody have any strong opinion about holding off on, on the board retreat until possibly August? I guess we can see how we're doing at that point. Ellen, go ahead.
Yeah, you, you, you and Retta said what I was kind of thinking. Um, I think we should put it off. Maybe do it just before school starts or begin in August sometime. We have a better handle on whether we can get together and stuff.
Right.
And do it, but we should do it sometime sooner rather than later, I think.
Oh, absolutely. But, um, you know, hopefully we can do it before school starts or the latest September. Cause it's a good way of all of us getting together and being able to talk, uh, openly and freely without being on Zoom. It's a little harder. So, all right. So then we're going to, uh, postpone the board retreat. We'll just kind of play it by ear, Brian, is that?
Yeah, that sounds, um, entirely appropriate.
Okay. We could touch base July. I mean, I guess just kind of see how things are going and figure out when we can set that up. Okay. Moving on to, thank you, Retta. Connective learning survey. Brian, that's you.
So I will, um, share my screen. Um, these results are posted on the website. Uh, what I think we haven't gotten posted yet are each school's, um, responses. So we will get those up on the website tomorrow. There are quite a few slides here, um, but we did in total have almost 1,800 responses. So I'd like to thank all of the parents who, uh, took the time to give us their input. That was, uh, really an incredible response and I'm very appreciative that we had so many folks, um, participate, participate. I did share, um, some of the results of this in my video from last week. But there were a, a number of, um, additional slides that I did not focus on just because of how long it would have made it. So this goes through and shows the percentage, um, represented by each school. This one for me is one of the most important ones. When we're looking at kind of the sweet spot of how much time kids are spending in connected learning, one to two hours is, is probably a little lighter than I would like to see it. This three to four is probably right where we want them to be. Seven or more hours is too much, less than an hour is way too little. So I think as we continue to refine our practices, uh, we'll continue to get a better handle on that. 71.3% have a dedicated device. This grouping, um, in red means that they're sharing devices. These would be the next, um, rounds that we would focus on or some of these folks down here that we do have kids that are only using a smartphone, which is really hard to, um, access, uh, platforms like Google Classroom. Internet connectivity in Goffstown is considerably better than New Boston. These results in New Boston are not nearly as strong. Additional support services that people are aware that our school counselors, our school nurses are available. So we've got about 80% of people who knew that some of those other supplemental ancillary services are available. The, uh, Meals for Kids program, um, we had a small group that didn't know about it. So this was good. Hopefully they learned a little something and for any of our families that might be experiencing food insecurity, they would be able to access that. This is probably for me, the most important, um, point of data that we got. This is, um, looking at just the right amount is red, um, blue is too much and orange is too little. So I've continued to say that we have families that are overwhelmed and having a hard time supporting their kids. We recognize that. I think that number, at least from the survey results, is about 100 to 150, um, families that are having a hard time supporting their kids. But we also have, um, families that think it's not enough. So we'd like to continue to offer some of those enrichment activities for those families. So five is strongly agree, one is strongly disagree. So as a family, they're able to support their students' learning. And that's about 160, 170 are saying no, that they're having a hard time with that. And I apologize, there's a, uh, a bulldog barking upstairs and I'm alone, um, and can't even, um, ask for help to quiet him down right now. So hopefully he'll, uh, behave himself. Requiring too much of families and, uh, we see here that almost a thousand, um, are saying no. They're not having, um, this require too much of families, require too much of kids. Very similar response on the nose between one and two. Three is neutral. For students with special education needs, um, staff are working hard to support their learning. Very similar with 504. And again, your threes here would be your neutral, um, responses. If people have needed to get in touch with teachers, they've been able to do so. And more than half said they haven't needed to, but, um, if they needed to, almost all the time. And then, so some of these that are saying, um, they can't get in touch, I would like those people to reach out directly to our school principals. Um, if there are people that aren't returning calls or, uh, emails, we would certainly want to make sure that we're getting those people the support they need. So in the past week, I've received the support that I need. Um, you can see that again, most folks, uh, agree and strongly agree. So these 120 people here that aren't getting the help they need, um, these are the people that I think we really need to target and really need to focus on. Again, I would ask those families to email, um, either me and I will direct them to the proper place or to send them, I would send them to the school principals because we do have, um, the ability to provide more of that support. So we continue to use, uh, video obviously as a primary, um, tool of communication. I think people are appreciative that it's a good way for us to push information out, as is the website. Um, so again, we've got 150 people who don't think that the website's providing information sufficiently. So I'm, I'm apologetic to those folks, but we're working as hard as we can. Communication is clear. I think, uh, most people, you can see overwhelmingly believe that it is. The amount of communication being provided is appropriate. Um, 15.9% believe it's too little and orange is, they think it's too much communication. But I'd say 83% is a, a really strong, um, amount. So my student has continued to prog- uh, progress through this period of connected learning. Uh, again, we recognize that this is incredibly challenging for families, particularly when we have parents that are supporting young children, multiple devices, parents are still trying to work from home while they're supporting their students. And lastly, overall, how satisfied are you with your child's learning program? Blue is very satisfied, red is satisfied, orange is neutral. And then we do have, um, a percentage that has been, uh, dissatisfied. But in total, um, I think our responses were very favorable. Um, again, I'm appreciative that we had almost 1,800 people, uh, provide input. And we will get the individual, um, school results posted on the website as well for anyone who is interested in looking at those.
Great. Thank you, Brian. Does anybody have any questions about that before we move on? Okay. See and none. Um, the next is school reopening framework.
Okay. So, um, I'd like to probably give a little bit of an introduction to this and then I will, um, share a document with everyone and I will discuss it. Um, at this point, we have not, uh, received any guidance of when or how we might go about opening our schools. This, um, task force that the, um, commissioner has started, I think this is part of the scope of their work. But I have continued to hear that schools reopening and how they do it will be local decisions. So at this point, um, we wanted to go ahead and, um, create a model that, um, we would be able to, um, show exactly what we're working on with respect to, uh, a reopening plan. So for me, this is posted on the website. So anyone who's interested can take a look at this and I'll pull up the document and speak to this. So at this point, um, it's important for me to share with the board that we are better to have a plan and to be thinking purposely and methodically about how we will go about reopening our schools than to not have a plan. So I do expect at some point that we will be given more direction and more guidance from public health officials. But thus far, uh, we have not received it. And I, I, I really, this for me, this is the kind of stuff that keeps me up at night. So it was better for me to, um, spend the last several weeks thinking about this and planning for this because I need people to begin to recognize that schools. because I need people to begin to recognize that schools reopening are going to look very different than when they closed. So the plan is, this framework, the intent is to operationalize a strategic, multi-phased approach to reopening our schools safely. The framework must be flexible and able to respond to changing COVID nineteen variables, and it must be aligned with public health data. Here, I highlight that, again, we have not been given this type of guidance from the federal or state governments. And from a planning perspective, we need to be planning for a reopening months before it occurs because this is going to be incredibly complicated for all of our administrators and all of our teachers to be able to do this. I go through and list our guiding beliefs. And first and foremost, safety is the most important element. So the safety of our students, faculty and community is our highest priority. And schools need to reopen because kids need to learn and they need to interact with others. Connected learning is not equivalent to or a replacement for onsite teaching and learning. And students deserve the best public education that we can provide to them. It's also incredibly important for us to reopen schools because we cannot reopen the economy until our schools are open and parents aren't providing childcare. They're not providing supports during connected learning. We got to get people back to work. And the only way we're going to be able to do that is we're going to need to allow schools to reopen and to get kids back in, into our schools. So reopening our schools comes with risk, just like going to the grocery store, going to Home Depot. People who are still going to work every day, there is risk associated with all of this. And we need to do everything we can to ensure the safety of this highly dynamic public health crisis. Reopening decisions will be based on epidemiological data and guided by public health and our local emergency partners. I think you all know I meet with our local police and fire chiefs every single week. We look at the data very, very closely. As we move between phases in this plan, when I show you, those decisions will be made based on public health guidance. So this framework is to be implemented in conjunction with our emergency operations plan, which is for us, our pandemic epidemic emergencies and our temporary regulation to policy EBCF. This framework is also implemented in conjunction with our return to school criteria. Both of these documents are linked so that you can go and look at our return to school criteria. It's important for all of us to recognize that in the absence of a vaccine or extensive widely available rapid testing, that this framework is really going to need to be fluid. So when we think about this, connected learning through remote instruction and remote support will continue to be a primary methodology of, of our schools being in session. It's not appropriate to think about our schools being a binary choice, that we're either open or we're closed. And that we need to think about a purposeful planned phased in approach to this. Our schools will need to look at this on an individual school basis. So my model is that this framework will then be used and each school will develop an implementation plan based on their circumstances, as well as the logistical elements for those schools. So the framework needs to be flexible and it needs to be, allow us to respond on a case by case basis to students or staff who present with properly documented medical restrictions preventing their safe return to campus. This is something that I think is incredibly important, that if people have existing comorbidities from a health perspective or maybe immune compromised, that we will need to focus on that for students and staff. This framework must support the equity of all students and it must support the personalization of learning. So those are the guiding beliefs. And then I start to get into the framework itself. So I'll just show and explain a little bit about this. These three phases across the top, think about significant restrictions, reduced restrictions but still restricted, and then limited restrictions. So as I present this, my recommendation would be to look and to pay attention to these two, if I can hold on. These two, nope, these two, okay. The column that says area and the column that says factor, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time copying them for some reason. But these areas will be the most important as you look at this document. So from an educational delivery model, this will be a hybrid model where we have the majority of instruction occurring online and we have limited, small group time restrictions on campus. The model needs to be flexible, allowing for different expectations for different levels. So for example, the, some European countries have started their reopening. So Sweden, Denmark, Germany have started to reopen. But it's important to know that if we're talking about Sweden, Sweden had a, a fraction of the number of COVID nineteen cases that the United States has had. We have, at this point, about five percent of the world's population, and I think we have close to twenty-six percent of all cases. So this model potentially looks different for different levels. I don't know how we have restricted groups with social distancing happening with preschool or kindergarten age children. So developmentally, those things will need to be thought about and discussed. We will have significant training as associated with this plan that we will need people to be, they will need to know the expectations and they will need to be accountable for those expectations. From a course offering perspective, we may not have some courses that we're able to offer if we continue to be in a remote or a hybrid model. So a couple of examples may be that we can't teach creative welding remotely, but the teacher who teaches that class might be able to teach a different course, like a digital photography or another course. So we need to evaluate some of our courses that we offer. Moving forward, if we find ourselves off campus in the fall, I'm going to have some changing expectations around a hybrid model. So I will not be in support of pass fail. We will have increased attendance expectation, including kids attending some of the support sessions that our teachers are offering right now. Some of those are considered optional and we would look to increase the attendance requirements associated with those classes. We need to promote healthy hygiene, so we need to have mandatory hand washing and sanitizing stations. So this is something that particularly for younger children, we would do on a timeframe. We would require this so that kids are appropriately washing their hands and taking good care of that. I'm very concerned about the mental health of our students. And this part here, Mrs. Barry has already started to think about this. I've asked her to develop a comprehensive plan for student and staff well-being, looking at the social emotional learning needs during this pandemic in support of our educational delivery model. So I think we need to think more about this because the longer this circumstance continues to go on, the more draining it is for everyone from a social emotional perspective. Athletics at this point are suspended. We will continue to watch for recommendations from the NHIAA, which is the New Hampshire Interscholastic Athletic Association. Device availability is something that we would continue to look at. And as I explained, that stimulus money that we're looking at, the better part of three hundred thousand dollars, a lot of that would likely be targeted towards the use of these, supporting these devices. Remote support will need to continue so that we continue to provide IT support to families and teachers as they need it. When we start to come back onto campus, we'll have to have protocols for safely using shared technology. So this would be things like our time clocks. This could be things like fax machines, intercom systems. We will have to have protocols associated with using all of those pieces. My recommendation would be to get a legal review of this framework at some point when we get closer to opening. Because from a legal perspective, there is a certain amount of liability exposure, risk management. And we may need to be thinking about things like notifications, waivers and potentially releases. As we start to reopen, I would see our schools operating in what I would call a modified secure campus system. So this is, schools and our campuses will have highly restricted accessibility. So typically in a secure campus model, no one gets in, no one gets out. So our, our campuses would have significant access restrictions. We would work with our first responders, our colleagues in the police and fire departments to expand our emergency operations plan and to make sure that we include all possible scenarios that the school districts would encounter, including infection scenarios as well as, and it's sad to say it, but the potential of fatalities of students or staff. Each school, in each location, so I would include, for example, the Alt Ed building in this, will have a committee that will use this framework to begin to operationalize how we will go about reopening our schools based on this framework. We will have to change our school handbooks because there will be all kinds of new logistical considerations as we go through a reopening. Communications, I, I think the board is aware that our communications plan, I am a big believer in the approach to communication being centralized. And by that, I mean directed from the SAU level, from the superintendent, as well as a decentralized approach where teachers and principals are also communicating with all of our stakeholders. Transportation is incredibly challenging. But as we think about this and we think about where the majority of community transmission has occurred of COVID nineteen, the, the big hotspot areas have been public transportation, people's employment, as well as restaurants. So transportation will look incredibly different. And at this point, when we think about things like social distancing on school buses, it could be the use of personal protective equipment. We may have to modify our buses so that there's a, less of a possibility of transmission to our drivers. And so all of what we will focus on with respect to transportation will need some significant changes. Parents, students and staff will need to have an attestation process where we are asking them to attest to being symptomatic or potentially exposed to COVID nineteen. And we will need to restrict people's access as well as the possibility of requiring quarantine. Symptom screening, so when students and staff come to school, there will be screening of symptoms, including daily temperature checks for all students and staff. Building entry and exit is going to be very restricted. So we would have limited cohort sizes, we would have social distancing, we would have isolation within the school. All of our common areas would likely be restricted altogether. So this would include all of our libraries, cafeterias, gymnasiums, locker rooms, playgrounds, et cetera. So if you think about grocery stores as an example, grocery stores look very different than they did before. They limit the number of customers who are able to come into the school, into the grocery store. They have restricted aisles as one way. They're limiting things like deli service. So we have to think about similar kinds of approaches for our schools. Social distancing and spacing of classrooms will be problematic. But at this point, we are not allowed to have group sizes larger than ten. As that begins to change, we can rethink that. But at this point, we would look at small, limited cohorts of students being on campus. We would not have any mixing of groups. So what we would see is teachers would not share students. We would eliminate that groups would be the same groups. So if we have a group of nine students who come in to work with one teacher, and that's a restricted group of ten, it would be the same nine students each time. So that if in fact there was any possible exposure COVID nineteen, we would have a very restricted number that we were dealing with. And that would also allow us the ability to do the contact tracing that we would need to be able to know every student who came in contact with the potentially infected person and to allow the ability for them to self-quarantine, to isolate and to monitor their symptoms. Bathrooms and bathroom access are going to be a significant challenge for us to ensure social distancing, access, how these spaces are cleaned, how often they're cleaned, making sure that we have enough staff to be doing that. Our cafeteria programs are going to look different. So we would not allow kids to be in large common areas sharing things like serving utensils or access to condiments. So all meals would be either in a to-go type scenario or kids would be eating in classrooms with considerable restrictions. Our Meals to, for Kids program will continue, as I've said, at least until September thirtieth, based on the information that the commissioner has shared with superintendents. We would have limited sharing of classroom materials, including technology. So we're not going to be able to do things like share laptop computers, share textbooks, share microscopes between science classroom. We would want to minimize the amount of supplies and materials that are being shared between groups. At this point, we would anticipate the use of personal protective equipment, likely masks, gloves, potentially face shields for some of our employees. And we have been working hard to get the PPE that we need, as well as things like hands-free temporal thermometers. So we have been working with vendors to procure those necessary supplies and equipments. From a staffing perspective, we know that we struggle to find and keep substitute teachers in a non-pandemic environment. We would need to really think about the staffing challenges and to have backup and redundancy planning. That would be important for us to continue to operate our schools. Childcare support services, this would be the before and after school care program through the YMCA. We would need to evaluate whether we could safely allow them to access our facilities and how those areas would be managed and cleaned. I'm not prepared to say that we would not allow them to use our facility because I know that that's an important element of allowing parents to get back to work. We will need to work with our four unions in Goffstown and New Boston. There are significant contract implications contained within this framework. And any kind of a reopening will require us to be at the negotiation table with our teachers' union as well as our support staff union. Assessment of individuals with high risk factors. We will have to have a system of making sure that we're keeping all of our folks safe. Expanding nursing services, so we would need the ability to potentially isolate students who may be COVID nineteen symptomatic or may have had exposure. So we would not want to just take those students and isolate them in the nurse's office. We would want the ability to quarantine them at school while we were waiting for their parents to come and pick them up. So from an illness management perspective, we would need to have enhanced requirements for students and staff that might have any health considerations. So it could be that if you have a fever, that we would let you come back to school within twenty-four hours, but maybe not during this, that we may have expanded expectations. And certainly for our employees, we would have to make really sure that people aren't coming to school. to school if they're not feeling well. We would need the ability to plan for illness management, so we would have to think before anything were to happen, what would we do if we had exposure? How would we communicate? How would we prevent and minimize the risk, including isolation and contact tracing? Absenteeism, we would need to go through and have our nurses and our administrators looking at daily and weekly absenteeism. Any students who are absent, I would anticipate that we would have enhanced health screening questions, as well as protocols before anyone is able to return to campus. So again, from a health management perspective, we would need to think about what we would do and how we would respond if we had an outbreak or a cluster of outbreaks. Cleaning would be consistently implemented per the CDC recommendations. Something that I've really thought a lot about has been enhanced air ventilation exchange. So the idea that we have respiratory droplets, we would want to make sure that we are running our HVAC systems to ensure that we are exchanging the air and that we have good, clean, fresh air circulating through all of our classrooms. In working with our emergency management partners, it's important to remember that our facilities are at their use if they need to. So Mountain View Middle School as our emergency shelter, and Goffstown High School, if you're not aware, is a point of dispensing. So if there was a need to do a vaccine for the community, Goffstown High School supports that in Hillsborough County. And for facilities, our facilities' use would continue to be suspended, but as we progress over here to the right through Phase 2 and Phase 3, that we would start to evaluate if we would be able to reevaluate that. So at this point, that is the plan, the framework that I've developed, and we will continue to look at what we're provided with recommendations, but for us to be ready to think about any kind of a potential reopening in the fall, we need to be planning for this all summer long. So unfortunately, I'm not optimistic that we can't even get guidance on how to do extended school year programming, and it's, at this point, it's almost June. So I felt it was better for us to have a document that may not be as complete as public health officials may give us, but from a planning perspective, it allows us to really think about what we need to do and how we need to be planning to be ready as public health circumstances allow. So that's kind of a lot to all take in all at once, and I would encourage people to take a look at the document, read through the document, and we will continue to work on refining that as we progress forward.
Oh, thank you, Brian. That looks like you spent a lot of time doing that. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions, Ellen?
Yes, first off, thank you. That is a huge amount of forethought and organization and consideration. I'm glad to see we're doing it beforehand instead of waiting till after. I don't even know if it's even possible, but might we look into getting some of those quick result testing kits? And be able to use that if there's somebody who's, is in the facility who seems to be ill.
I think testing is something that, at this point, I think, I think we're going in the right direction. I think testing has been a considerable challenge at the state and the national level. It does look like there seem to be a lot more tests available. I know that the state of New Hampshire did over 1,200 tests in a day last week, that was the highest number they'd ever done. So I do think, Ellen, that the ability to potentially test kids if they were on-site is something that we would look at. Another option that I've considered is if we had the ability to test on a weekly basis, and we continued to allow small groups of kids to come in. If you, for example, tested every Wednesday, and if I am negative, that may allow me to have the ability to be on campus, but if I test positive, we would then only have to go back a week and look at what the potential exposure was and to evaluate the contact tracing. So you know, the testing is a real wild card here, because at this point, there seems to be a fair amount of data that suggests that if you have and recover from COVID-19, there are a number of examples that people have been reinfected, or at least that's something that the scientists are evaluating. So I think at this point, testing is a real wild card, and I would hope that we might have better testing, but at this point, we simply don't.
Thank you, Ellen. Janelle, I saw your hand up. Janelle, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I wanted to say, wow, that's a lot to take in, and thank you so much for that work. I can't imagine what that must have been like for you as a superintendent to try to think about those things to keep our kids safe in the event of a reopening. But I can't help but wonder, what would it look like if in September, we're not opening and we're continuing with our online learning? Are there plans and trainings, professional development, being thought about if that's maybe the case for September?
Yeah, so at this point, I might ask Mrs. Berry if she might want to chime in and provide some of her thoughts with respect to professional development, but we, I would say at this point, we're doing parallel planning. So we are planning for the ability to slowly start to reopen schools, and we recognize that that's going to take us a significant amount of time. We're also doing a fair amount of work on if we continue to be in a remote instruction and support model, how do we do better? How do we continue to refine what we're doing? How do we continue to implement the best practices of a remote instructional model? So that includes things like grading. So for example, the board should anticipate, we will be coming forward to you probably at your next meeting with a recommendation to reevaluate the high school's grading model. So for teachers, going to a pass/fail grading system for the remainder of this school year, I still maintain was the right decision, but if we find ourselves off-campus again in the fall, we're going to need to rethink that. So we would want to make sure that our teachers are working together, that they're doing shared planning as they have been, they're looking at grading practices, they're looking at requirements around attendance for kids, and I think it's going to take a lot of work for us over the summer to plan to be on-campus, but also to plan through a hybrid model. MC, anything you might share with respect to Janelle's question, which I think is a good one?
No, I think you pretty much covered most of it, which is no surprise, because you and I are in constant communication over these things. I think the only other piece, Janelle, that I would add is, one of the areas that teachers have been asking for support is in being able to provide instruction remotely, and this has been a question that Brian has been asking as well. I think we've gotten really good at disseminating information about what needs to be done and providing support for that, but relative to the art, really, of being able to instruct using different media is something where we're seeing that people are asking for and are looking for support. So we're actually in the process right now of looking for some resources to give us some help with that.
Thank you, MC. Janelle, did you have anything else?
I was just saying, thank you.
Oh, okay, all right. Any other questions for Brian or MC? Okay, I see none. Thank you for all that wonderful information. So more to come. Yes, oh, Ginny, I'm sorry, I can't see your face.
Actually, I thought I had my little hand up.
Sorry, go ahead, Ginny.
I'm wondering if any thought was given to maybe needing more health professionals in the school when we go back?
Yeah, that's, that's a really good question, Ginny. So MC and I had a call with our nurses, I can't remember MC, if it was last week or the week before, they're kind of blending to me, but I think it's entirely likely that we will need more support in our nurses' offices, whether that could be either more RNs, or it could be that we have, you know, a couple of paraprofessionals that are assigned to help with them, but certainly if we're thinking about, you know, bringing in students, just the ability to do temperature screenings is going to take more people. If we have to isolate kids because they might be symptomatic, we're going to need more people to be able to support them there. So I do think you raise a really good point, and that could be something in the future that we'd need to evaluate if we might need more nursing support services in our schools.
And another thought is, as far as quarantining students, sorry, especially in Glen Lake, the nurse's office is shared with another teacher. So there's going to be some logistics as far as space, I think.
So within that framework, I am envisioning that there would be a supplemental kind of nursing space annex, so we would need to think about where, how, how to staff that, how are we cleaning that, what kind of frequency that we're sanitizing those spaces? But yes, Ginny, all of those considerations will be critically important.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ginny. Does anybody else have anything to add to that before we move on? I see no hands up. Thank you again, Brian, for that information. So the next on the agenda is the CIP discussion. Is that Scott?
Mr. Gross.
Sure, I sent out a copy of the proposed CIP. I gave an advanced copy to Ellen, who's our CIP rep, and Susanna, who is our alternate last week, and I sent it out to all the board members today. Essentially, what we did was we, Randy and Dawn did the lion's share of the updates, as well as I met with Steve Borchet. Most CIP items deal with facilities and technology. We did add probably about a dozen items that were proposed this year in 2020. The vast majority of them were IT. In the document that I sent you, I sent you last year's CIP, that was, and last year's what we call a mini CIP, these are the items that are under $25,000, and the ones that were color-coded in gold, those were essentially the ones that we were able to knock off the list. So that being said, you know, are there any questions that anybody has regarding the proposed CIP? The plan is to provide essentially the backup forms to Town Hall, the planning department, and then Ellen and Susanna would represent us as, on the school district side, as they go through it during the summer.
Thank you, Scott. Does anybody have any questions for Scott? I see no questions.
Ellen does.
Oh, there's your hand, okay. It wasn't there a second ago. Go ahead, Ellen.
I did get a chance to look over this. It looks really good. Was anything put on the list for CIP that was not on there last year?
Yeah, as I stated, if you look at the column that says first proposed, and I'll just share my screen with you, just to show you what I'm talking about. So here, Ellen, to answer your question, if it says 2020, it was first proposed, so you're going to see like an item, this is Bartlett Computer Lab, this is Laptop Card Replacement, all of these were not on the CIP but are on it now, and again, the vast majority of that are IT.
Okay, where does it say first proposed?
Up here.
Oh, I see, okay.
To the word MO. And if there's anything that, just so you know, when I went through it, I saw that there was two or three that were blank. If they were blank, it was, it was 2020, because we added those, you know, kind of in the last week or two, to just so you know.
Okay, I've got it in front of me here. Okay, the only comment, looking over it, that I will have as we move forward is, and I don't think, I didn't see anything that would be in the coming fiscal year, but any major work being done at our elementary schools, I as just one person, one vote, may have a difficult time supporting, putting that kind of money into those schools until we've made a decision.
Ellen, we don't have anything that's programmed in for 2021 at our elementary schools that have to do with infrastructure.
Right, for the coming year, I didn't see anything, but it's, it's coming up, you know, in a year or two down, two or three years down, there are some things listed, and I think the board needs to be aware that there are some items that, yes, should be on there for the moment, but as we move forward, could be quite a discussion for us as to whether we should be doing them, in sight of other considerations with our building community and all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Susanna, I saw your hand.
Yes, hi, Scott. I have a question on the tab FY21-26 CIP list. You have listed on line 31 Laptop Card Replacement for 2021, $35,000, and it seems like it's MVMS, so it's for middle school. And then you have the same amount on line 48, but that doesn't specify the school. If you could make that clear in your memo, which school that is for, so we can differentiate between those two, because it's the same amount. I would appreciate that.
Can you repeat that again? Because I'm looking at, you said it was 21 through 26?
Yep, and it's the Laptop Card Replacement, line 31 and 48.
31.
And 48.
The high school.
It says 31 says, again, Del Sprit?
Hey, Scott, it says, it says district, so why is it saying district? Is it going to be used all over the schools, every single school on line 48?
Yeah.
I'm showing something different on this screen. When I say, when you say line, I'm looking at number.
Yeah, it says seal coding.
Yeah, that's seal coding. So Computer Lab is 46, maybe? So what line are you looking at?
41, I'm looking at the one that you sent the spreadsheet, sorry.
Okay.
And what happened was, it's possible that those line numbers never got reordered.
Okay.
Because we did delete some things out of it, and then we had to reorder the numbers, so that's, that's why I sent it.
Thank you.
Want to just shoot me a note?
Yes.
And I'll, I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, I will do that, but I think it's a Goffstown High School, it's just the way it was on this, on the sheet, it didn't look different, so, okay. Never mind, that was, I was looking at the spreadsheet that you sent. Thank you.
Thank you, Susanna. Is there any other questions for Scott regarding the CIP?
Thank you for sending these out, Scott.
Oh, not a problem. Randy and Dawn did the lion's share of the work, they deserve, I mean, they did this last year and they updated it, and they just, they've just done an outstanding job, and I think it's good, it's really what the budget committee's been asking for, for many years, and I think we're doing a nice job with it.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, so.
If I may, Heather, I really appreciate the one that you color-coded with the gold to show what we've already done and how we did it. I think that's important to have as well.
All right, thank you, Scott. Thank you, Ellen. Okay, moving on, we need to give authorization for the business administrator to pay bills. At the last board meeting, we had discussed making a motion for him to continue this to the end of the school year. So I'm not sure how you want to make this motion. Usually in June, we will be making motions for the superintendent and the BA to continue doing business through the summer, but that will happen in one of our June meetings. So I will need a motion. So I will need a motion to authorize the BA to continue to pay bills. So either we have it written down on your agenda, you can read it that way, or you can say for the remainder of the year. Ellen, go ahead.
I move that we authorize the business administrator to continue paying bills until the last school board meeting of this school year.
Okay, does that work?
Dan?
Just, that is a, how do you know what the last one is? We really don't know. I mean, is next one the last one because we don't have the last one? Because it's scheduled or not scheduled, we have to be a little clearer.
To the next successful board meeting. Does that work?
Okay, I wanted to take it through our June meeting, but that's fine.
Then just say the, say the end, say the scheduled meeting for that particular day. Not the last one. The last scheduled meeting would work because it gives you a date definitive.
Last scheduled school board meeting of this school year. How's that?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you, Dan. Does anybody have any other questions on that? Okay, I'm going to take a roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're unanimous, Denise. Thank you. Okay, so that goes into school staffing. Brian?
Mr. Gross, if you can put up the school staffing sheet?
And so we have a couple of just notifications. Andrea LaFortun will be moving from Bartlett to Maple Ave and will be changing from a special ed position to an interventionist position. And we have a track change for Scott moving from bachelor's to bachelor's 15, so Scott at the high school. And then for your approval, we have a resignation from Patricia Ellis and we have a nomination for Aaron Sakolowski, who will be a new middle school counselor. And I think that's all that's on the sheet, right, Scott?
Yes, that's all we have. There's, there's no.
We would be asking for your approval of the resignation and the nomination.
So moved.
All right, Scott, can you put me back to the full screen, please? It's okay. All right, so we, you had a motion, Ellen?
Yeah, I'll move that we accept, do we have to do them separately or can we do them together?
You could do them together if you'd like.
Okay, I move that we accept the resignation and the replacement as presented.
Janelle, you had your hand up?
A second.
Second, perfect, thank you. All right, I'm going to do a roll call if there's no other questions. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared? Ginny?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're unanimous. Thank you.
Will we be sending a card to Scott?
We certainly will.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ginny. Okay, so is there any business that may legally come before the meeting? Ellen, go ahead.
Yeah, just real quick, we spoke about it before. The Exchange Student Policy, JFABB, is out of date and needs to be updated. It talks about three school districts in the SAU and hasn't been updated or reviewed in quite a while. So I just wanted to bring that on the record, that we take care of that.
So maybe as a policy review starts to get back up and running in the future, we can add that to the queue.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Heather, I have just one thing, if I may. At our next board meeting, I would like to put on the agenda, Brian knows about this, revisiting our fund balance projection. And also, the board to consider two things. One would be you need to take a vote on the 2.5% contingency fund. That's a requirement. And I'd rather get that done sooner rather than later. And since we're talking about fund balance, it's a great time to chat about that. I've done some preliminary work with respect to that. The other one will be, would be a discussion about Glen Lake School and using funds to cover overage in the project. So I'll get, I'll get the board information, obviously before the meeting, but I wanted just to let, to plant the seed that we'll be discussing that.
Okay, perfect, thank you, Scott. And hopefully have some information for stipends.
Right, in the co-curriculars, yep.
Yep, okay. Anything else?
So Heather, we had tentatively put non-public session if there was any updates. I do have a quick personnel update I'd like to give to the board if we could go into non-public session under RSA 91A32C. Matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself unless such person requests an open meeting. This exemption shall extend to any application for assistance or tax abatement or waiver of a fine, a fee, fine, or other levy if based on the inability to pay or poverty of the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
So moved.
Hi, Ellen, I need a second.
Second by Dan.
By Dan, thank you, Dan. Okay, roll call, Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared? Ginny?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we will go into non-public, so.
I have to drop off, I have to drop the calls.
Okay.
If you drop off, Scott, okay, we're still here. I didn't know if he was the host.
No, no, I have to drop the ones on, that's on that bridge.
Oh, you're dropping them?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And you need to drop Adam.
Right.
Scott, do you need me to?
Yes, in the other room, if you wouldn't mind.
Oh, right, the phone.
Goodbye, Adam.